We're almost there, Jim.
Thank you.
That's the planning board music.
It does say it's successfully streaming on Facebook now.
That was the theme song from Hollywood Squares, because that's what it reminds me of.
Okay, Jim, I guess you're on.
All right, the floor is yours, we're live.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Henrietta Planning Board on Thursday, May 28, 2020. Members present Matt Borkowski, Lawrence Neal. I'm sorry. Members present Matthew Borkowski, Lawrence Neal, Steve McIntyre, Patricia Brill, Rick Page, Craig Eckert, and Daniel Mestrela, Planning Board Attorney. First item on the agenda this evening will be the minutes from the April 29, 2020 meeting. The board will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Page? Do I have a sufficient second?
Second.
Mrs. Brill? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Application number 20005, Apex Student Housing Phase Two, for final site plan approval of a proposed 139,185 square foot, five-story multifamily dwelling for student housing on a 14-acre lot located at 380 John Street in an R215 zone district. May I ask who's here representing the applicant, please?
Timmaris with Pastoral Associates, 242 West Main Street, 14614 is the zip code. And also here tonight, he could probably speak for himself, but Tom George. He's also here with us, representing the developer.
Hello, gentlemen, thank you.
Sorry, Tom, I cut you off. So good evening, or good virtual evening, I guess, everybody. Patty can't yell at me for not speaking loud into the microphone. So here tonight, presenting the Apex Two project, I think everybody knows all about Apex One and can drive by on John Street. Progress on that project is moving along quite fast, I would say. The building's almost to full height, fully enclosed, almost fully enclosed. A lot of the site work's been done. But more about Apex Two. It's an additional 78 student housing units, apartment units totaling about 300, or a little over 300 beds. Basically completing the rest of the full build out that was previously approved back in 2019 under the special, or excuse me, the special use permit that was granted by the town board then. Since then, we've obviously obtained all approvals for Apex One. We've also been back to the town board for special use permit for building height for Apex Two. It's approximately 73-foot tall buildings, so we obtained that height variance from the town board at that time. And next week, the project will be before the zoning board for parking variance. We're a little short on parking as far as code goes, however, based on previous studies of student housing developments in and around Henrietta, as well as as countrywide, we are exceeding the roughly 60% to 70% parking spaces that we typically see on a student housing type project. So with a total of 729 parking spaces. As far as building materials go, they'll match in color, in kind, not only material, but in color of the Phase One building, so very complimentary, exactly the same. Landscaping will be carried throughout, the same throughout the entire, the entire site. In terms of environmental, Seeker was completed for the overall project, especially the town board back in November 2019, so I don't believe this board would need to perform that or that action tonight. Just simply site plan approval. Just trying to think of any other environmental issues. We did obtain for Phase One, a little caveat here. The ClomRF removing the project from the floodplain, we are pursuing that for this, for this part of the site as well. We've received a couple of comments from FEMA, have addressed those, and would anticipate approval in the next couple of weeks here, so. Stormwater management, we're going to do underground stormwater management with water quality units, as well as proprietary chambers underneath the parking lots, much like Phase One was approved. That's the, we did receive town comments on the SWIP as it relates to the stormwater management, addressed those. And Mr. Ardieta is reviewing those current, those revisions currently. We did receive town engineering comments earlier, earlier this week. I don't know if they got into your guys' this group's hands with our responses, at least to the letter, and then the town markups will be brought back to Mr. Martin tomorrow if all goes right. With that, I think I've hit all the highlighted items. I can address any comments the board may have.
Thank you, and we did get those comments, and we always appreciate when the applicants do that for us. So I will open it up, and we'll start with Mr. Neal. Mr. Neal?
Yeah. I'm just trying to get it working out. Dan, just a couple of questions. For the things that we're waiting for FEMA and the SWIPs, do we need to make this conditional at all?
Well, if they don't get those approvals, they're not going to be able to go forward with the project. You can make it conditional, but you don't really need to, because that'll pull the project anyway.
Okay.
And I will add, Dan, that was part of our staff comments as well, so they have to be addressed regardless.
Okay, that sounds fine. Chris, I did have just one other question, and it has to do with the drainage engineering, and it's on page four. And you made a comment about extending 100 yards, I'm sorry, 100 feet from the property lines for drainage, and they said, the applicant said that it wasn't necessary. Do you concur with that? Is that okay?
I think we'd like to see some additional topography or something back there, because a lot of times when it stops just at the property line, there's other things that, other factors that come into play. You know, is there a high spot, there's a low spot, is, you know, and we've had a couple of problems on previous projects. So, you know, whether they can use like LiDAR or something to supplement it, that would be acceptable, but we really need some additional information back there.
Okay, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right, that's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. The Chair will recognize Mr. Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of quick questions. The first and foremost is, I guess, schedule to refresh my memory, if you will. When is the work planned for the connections to John Street?
That would be probably later in the project. Spring, summer, next year, there's a, Tom jumping in here from Miss Speaking, but an August 21 opening for both, both facilities or both buildings. So prior to, shortly prior to that, would be the opening to John.
So you still have construction access permits from the county for that?
Correct, yep.
Do they need, just, I know you renewed LEH, I didn't know if you renewed those, too?
I think because they're active, they wouldn't need to be renewed. I think the issue for the, for that, what you're referring to, I think, is because the project did not progress as this one is.
Well, I know we've had some drainage issues, some water, a pipe that was found from the county unearthed that affected a lot of drainage and caused mud out in the road. We've had some situations with that before, so I'm really hoping that we can, if that's been addressed and some of the other issues addressed, we can stop more tracking of the mud out onto the road. So I'm really hoping that we can get those entrances in sooner than later.
Sure, yeah, no, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, we did, those are, that is, that work is complete, so we reconnected all that. And we will soon be sort of utilizing really a one entrance and exit for all construction, which is going to be in the south, southern portion, or the southern entrance of that, of the site itself, so to, I know there's been some frustration on the north end. So probably in the next two or three months, we'll be isolating all construction traffic to that south side.
Great, and Tim, back to the water, storm chambers underneath for detention qualities and bioretention. Where is the actual outlet? And forgive me, I should have found it on the plans myself, and I didn't.
That's going to be kind of just east of the building, yeah. East of the stormwater chambers that are on the phase, I'll call them the Phase Two stormwater chambers on the plan.
Okay, and is that the same exit outlet as Phase One? So that, and that exits the same location?
Not the same location, just further north.
Further north.
Or I'm sorry, further, further south. Apex One discharges further north.
And I'm pretty sure Chris has been on top of this, but, you know, we have a lot of drainage complaints to the north from the other development, and I just tried to make sure we're not adding to them.
Sure.
Okay, the only other comment I have is maybe just a small glitch on the lighting plan. You know there, I'm going with that. Some of the foot candles don't line up to the lights themselves.
I was hoping you caught that. Those have been, since been corrected on the plans, and you'll, you'll see the revised version tomorrow, but yes.
Excellent, so then my next question off of that is going to be what?
They're LED dark sky compliant, and they meet the town's requirements in terms of height, and they will be the same exact fixture as Phase One.
Okay, great, so the, do you have a, the lighting sheet for the energy savings? The same thing we did through Starbucks?
I will have to go get that. I don't have it in front of me, obviously.
You can take a look at that and run your numbers through there. And again, I'm only asking you that, because I think I saved you a light pole last time, right?
You might have, you might have.
So I might have saved him a grand, Tom, so I'm just looking out for your own interest there, too.
We can value engineer it all later.
Excellent, so if you want to, if you need some help with that evaluation sheet, let me know. But I'd like to see that, doesn't need to be with the plans, just run through your numbers real quick and make sure you're meeting the new energy compliance, okay?
Sure.
Those are the only questions I have, Mr. Chairman, on this project, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. The Chair will recognize Mr. Borkowski.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. First, I'll reiterate that I love when you guys do this, thanks. It makes our job a lot easier, and two, we also have you on record for saying what you're going to do. We appreciate that. My only thing is, I believe it was actually Mr. Eckert's predecessor brought up electric charging. I know you guys are doing some pretty cool stuff with, where you're putting bikes and all that kind of stuff. What did we end up with, with any kind of like alternative energy sources and charging of vehicles and that kind of stuff?
So actually.
We ended up with, I think we have a total of 12 stations in Phase One, and we haven't landed on how many we do for Phase Two, but we'll try to be as consistent in trying to identify the right location for them, but we'll probably mimic that at this point, so. It'd probably be close to total of 20 spaces for the whole project.
Yeah, that, that sounds awesome. I'm impressed, thank you guys for doing that. That's really all I have. I mean, everything else is in here, you guys are answering that well, and I know we don't even have to make this contingent, because if you, if you don't get the approvals, it can't go through. So thanks, guys, this is a really cool plan.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill.
Patty's got to hit her spacebar.
Mrs. Brill?
Hello, how's that? I did not receive the passero answers in my packet, so that probably would have saved me a lot of time. So if I'm being repetitive here on any of my questions, it's because I did not have those answers.
Really?
So one of the comments under General Number Six talks about how the finished floor elevations are exactly two feet above the 100-year flood elevation, and recommends raising that. Did we, did we address that? And we are a-okay to get that raised, at least, thank you.
Yep.
And again, you, you may have answered all of these, but since I don't have a copy, I'm going to just continue with asking them. Changing of the dumpster enclosure from the six to eight feet. We address the building colors are going to be exactly the same as the previous project.
Yep, and for the record, we did submit a letter to the town earlier this evening, or this afternoon, noting all of that, so.
Building mounted lights, Craig addressed that. Has the five-acre waiver been obtained from the town?
We will, so the town's still reviewing the SWIP, but yes, that'll be part of the complete SWIP once we get to the end of that, of the review process for that.
And then the other thing was the fire hydrant issue.
Yeah, so we did show that on the plan, and we adjusted the FTC location slightly, so it's within that 100-foot distance that Terry's looking for.
Perfect, that's all I had, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Brill. Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Tim, just to clarify, that Number Six under General, you are going two foot above floodplain elevation, right?
We're going to, we raised it to 2.2 feet, so that way, you know, if there's a hypothetical incorrect bust in construction, we should be okay. So we got a little room to play there.
So you're, you're going to raise it to 525.2? The floodplain's at 523.2?
So I may have, I may have, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish, I'm sorry.
So if you're, if you're at 525.2, you're only two foot over the floodplain?
We're going to, I think I may have missed, miswrote that in the letter, the response letter. And we actually revised the plans today, today to 525.4.
525.4?
Yeah, so that's a, that's an incorrect number in the letter, my apologies.
Okay, it sounded like you weren't going to raise it anymore above two feet from what I saw from the initial figures, but good, thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
One I have is on floodplain also. Vanguard Engineering did their calculations, April 24 is 2020. Question number three, or item number three indicates that the project will encroach the current floodplain boundary. How are you planning on handling that?
We have applied to FEMA for a ClomRF, much like we did the first phase of the project. We did receive the removal of that area from the floodplain for Phase One. We're in the middle of that process right now, and I'm thinking towards the end of it. We received a very minor comment last week, which we responded to. So we're anticipating the removal, removal of that area noted on the plans, I think it was a red circle, for the removal of the floodplain for that, too.
So this will be a decompensatory volume situation, or?
No, it'll be a, it, I think Mr. Ardieta's comment referred to either provide the compensatory storage or apply for the ClomRF, so we went the ClomRF option.
Essentially, that's for a waiver.
Correct, yes.
All right. But it is being initiated, and you are being responsive to that.
Absolutely, yeah, yep. Yeah, I would anticipate that in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you.
McIntyre, the Chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Thank you. Going last, originally I had 16 comments, but upon receiving your follow-up documents and the other comments from my fellow board members, I only have two things I want to ask. I wanted to confirm.
Rick's audio is very good.
Your mic is on, Rick, because you're very soft.
Is that better?
Yes.
So after my fellow board members' comments and the follow-up documents, I just had two issues that I wanted to be sure of. It was a little difficult for me to decipher the parking, so I want to confirm that the number of parking spaces are appropriate for 313 beds.
They are, yes. So the total site upon full build completion, at the end of the day, will be 729 parking spaces. It is adequate for the use, based on our previous studies of, for example, the lodge racket club, which have a 60% to 70% park, student to parking ratio. So we're comfortable with that number, that's, that's pretty, I'll say, student housing industry standard, if you will. And we are, we'll be at the zoning board next week, June 3, for the relief from the code for that.
And just to, just to clarify that for everybody, the previous operation of Collie Manor had, you know, they had only about maybe 50% of the residents there. We did went back to the school and went through, you know, documents that they, they only parked about 50% anyways, so. They were seeing even a lower percentage of kids at this property, and that's, that, as Tim was stating, you know, the closer you come to campus, and the fact that we have a shuttle service coming from the school, they are, they anticipate not seeing as many cars being brought to campus, or being brought to the apartments they live in.
Okay, and then the other, other comment with the parking is that unless I read the diagram or the plans wrong, it looks like there's four handicap spots for the new second phase.
Yeah, we're actually going to, we've increased that number since that set of plans.
Yeah, I think that was my point, I think that's a good idea, especially, especially when you consider parents coming for Parents Weekend if you're visiting. I think the number of handicapped places could, could increase. I think it's a good, good, good idea, thank you.
That's it, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I just had one thing, my colleagues got all the other questions that I had, but and I apologize if this was addressed in your comments, I saw them, but was running out of ink on my printer, which I'm using for work as well, so it didn't print them out. But Chris, I wanted to ask you, Number H, the stipulating the amount of the letter of credit. Is there a standard amount that we look at, or I just, I need your help with that?
Sure, Jim. So typically with the letter of credit, when we get near the end of the design process and, you know, the number linear foot of pipe or erosion control, whatever, like number of lights have been finalized, we ask the applicant's engineer to prepare us a cost estimate for certain items, like drainage, lighting, landscaping, those types of things. It gets reviewed by the engineering department, and then, once we settle on a number, then I write a letter to the applicant stating how much or what the amount of the letter of credit's going to be. And then they either give us, you know, a bond or something from the bank, or I'm sorry, a letter of credit from the bank, or a cash deposit, depending on which way they want to go.
Okay, thank you, so we don't need to come up with a number tonight, then?
No, no, so to answer your question, Jim, and a little bit more straightforward, is that's all taken care of near the end of the project before we sign off on the plans.
Okay, very good, thank you, Chris. Anything else for the good of the order, or?
Mr. Chairman?
Or Mr. Mestrela, any comments at this point?
Fine with everything that's.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Neal?
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question for Chris again. Chris, they were going, Tim is, is raising the finished floor elevation from up to 525.4. Are you okay with that? Is that high enough for you to go?
Yeah, I just wanted some little, you know, some room in there, I mean, to be honest, usually they're fairly accurate, but I have seen cases, Larry, where, you know, if they're like an inch or two shy, then, you know, there's not much you can really do at that point. So to give a little bit of wiggle room in there, you know, it's just good peace of mind for everyone.
Okay, so you're okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay, thank you.
Okay, all set, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion on application number 20005?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to apply, application 20-005.
Thank you, Mr. Borowski. Do we have a sufficient?
Chairman, I'll second it.
Mr. Neal? Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, everybody, have a good night.
Next item on the agenda is application number PB 305.2, Foxfield subdivision, Section Two, for final subdivision approval of a 54-lot residential subdivision located off of Farrell Road Extension in an R115 zone district. Who is here representing the applicant, please?
That would be, I'm the applicant, Ken Marvelt, and you've got my team here from BME.
Yep, the, I'm Mike Bogajewski with BME. The, I did just try to share my screen, so hopefully you guys can, can see that. Just I wanted to be able to bring up the rendering and the plans. The, we're here tonight just to, to request final subdivision approval for Section Two. This section consists of 54 single-family lots and on 38 acres. The total Foxfield subdivision, excuse me, total Foxfield subdivision consists of 107 lots on 109 acres. This section also includes open space area to be dedicated to the town, similar to previous Section One, which is 17.3 acres for Section Two, which is part of an overall 64 and a half acre open space area to be dedicated. The project itself, the project site is within our 115 zoning district, and all of the lot standards proposed within this section are both consist, are consistent with the approved preliminary plans. Hasn't been any changes to, to any of the lot standards from the approved preliminary plans. This section is basically completing, completing the subdivision. It was two phases, and the second phase will complete all of the roads and utilities for the proposed lots. The two roadways will get extended, as you can see on the rendering. Mossy Oak Cove, and then Hidden View will be extended to the proposed cul-de-sac. The utilities will be extended from existing stubs constructed within Section One. The water will be extended through the subdivision and looped from Mossy Oak to Hidden View. Sanitary sewer will be extended through Section Two, and then it ends up flowing to the existing pump station. That's within the open space that was constructed within Section One also. Stormwater, similar to Section One, runoff will be conveyed to a proposed stormwater management facility, which is maintaining existing drainage patterns. Existing drainage patterns end up draining and flowing north towards an existing wetland within the open space area, and then eventually to the Genesee River. That stormwater management facility consists of two bioretention areas to provide the necessary water quality treatments to meet DC guidelines, and then they drain into the stormwater management facility, which then drains into the existing wetlands, eventually the river, via a level lip spreader. As far as landscaping goes, we are proposing street trees and some landscaping plantings, consistent with the approved preliminary plans, and a similar concept to what was done with Section One. To meet the requirement of two street trees per lot, we are proposing one street tree per lot, and then some additional trees to be planted throughout the site. And then, similar to Section One, we have some shrubs at a ratio of two per tree to make sure we're meeting the overall total requirement. Seeker was completed with Section One, or excuse me, was completed with preliminary planning board as the lead agency issued the negative declaration. And this section is consistent with those approved preliminary plans. There really hasn't been any, any changes, so to speak. We did receive markups from the town engineer, from Chris and Rowan, plan markups earlier this week. We've gone through the markups, we're confident we can address all those plan revisions, and we'll be submitting revised plans back, back to the town for review. With that, I would be happy to open them up to any questions from the board.
Thank you very much. Now, chair will recognize Mr. Page.
Well, again, I saw the follow-up. Is there anything on Chris Martin's workup sheet that that you found to be something you couldn't address?
No, we thought the markups were were pretty simple. I think we're be confident that we can go through and address all those plan markups of Chris, yep.
That includes the grading in the backyard lots of two nineteen, two twenty and two twenty-one?
That was, that was one of the markups that Chris marked up. We did take a look at it and I think we can pull some of the grading in two nineteen and two twenty back. So that way we can, we can save as many trees as possible along the rear of those lots. I think Chris had marked up fifteen to twenty feet to try to save within that existing tree buffer. And I think if we pull back some of the grading, that we can, we can attempt to save some of those existing trees, at least along the eastern side of the existing tree, tree hedgerow.
Okay, and I know that I'll be listening to the discussion with regards to the buffer with some of the comments from one of our community members, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Chair will recognize Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to follow up on Mr. Page's comments, I also had some questions about that buffer. Apparently, one of the neighboring residences has checked and is unsure that we're going to have the the correct amount of tree buffering. Are we in sync on this or is there, is there a problem?
The, we did receive the comment and then, like I had mentioned, it was one of the markups that Chris had also on the plans to try to, to to reduce the amount of clearing that we do have on those two lots. And I can zoom in to the area that we're talking about. And it's basically these two lots, two nineteen, two twenty, and I think we're, we're in agreement with Chris's markups where we can pull some of the contours back and then save as much as we can along this eastern side of this row of trees, which would, which would help kind of retain some of the buffer that the neighbor to the east is referring to.
Oh, let me, this is Chris Martin. Let me interrupt you for a minute, Mike. Would you be willing or the developer be willing to maybe put some additional pine trees or spruce trees up along that back hedgerow to kind of protect where he has the, you know, the pond and the the outbuilding there to give him a little more privacy, kind of like we did on the south side, like a double row of pines?
I'll answer this. This is Peter Vars at BME. At this point, I think the answer to that question, Chris, is no. As you can see on this exhibit, and and we've discussed this with the developer today, not only in response to the initial mark, plan markups we received from the town, but also the additional correspondence that was submitted to the town by the neighbor and and some back and forth there. As you can see on this exhibit that is before you, the area of concern shows that those trees are completely on the proposed lots two nineteen and two twenty, that they're not along the property line. They are twenty to thirty feet inside the lot line. And as you can see by this aerial, actually, the adjoining has encroached onto the Foxfield property with his lawn use. This was verified also through our property survey that was conducted earlier this spring. So this aerial photo is is fairly accurate. What the developer is willing to do, as Mike pointed out though, is as it relates to lots two nineteen and two twenty, we can look at modifying that grading, pulling the contours back such that we can look at saving what healthy trees are there in that existing hedgerow. But to go and plant that rear property line, that's not something we're, that he's willing to consider now. And there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, there is no requirement to buffer residential uses from each other. This is residentially zoned land, abutting residentially zoned land. It's a compatible use. Second of all, we believe, or the developer believes, that those future homeowners on lots two nineteen, two twenty, they should be afforded the right as any lot owner is as to what they would like to do in their rear yard, as long as it's code compliant. They themselves may want something else along that rear property line. They themselves may want those trees saved, they may not, but that should be afforded to those property owners. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at right now, is that we'll attempt through the grading modification to save some of those trees that that are healthy. And and we are only talking about these two lots, everything south. We are going to keep the grading out of, out of the tree line that's there, but, but just recognize, these trees are not on a property line. They are fully within the Foxfield property.
And I understand what you're saying, Peter, but quite honestly, I don't agree with it. I, I, you know, certainly, I think we can, if we try to preserve as many trees as possible, that may be enough. However, on the south side of the property, you are adding additional trees as a buffer. So why wouldn't you want to do that for these two lots up here?
I'm sorry, just to be clear, which part of what Peter was asking, don't, didn't you agree with? I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, I think once, and I don't know what kind of trees are there. Are they deciduous trees or are they pine or spruce trees?
I think it's a mix.
All right, and, and, you know, to be fair, once, you know, the clearing is done, they may be enough. However, you know, I've had a lot of conversations, you know, with the, the resident to the east and I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for, you know, a couple rows of pine trees, you know, where those two lots are.
And I guess, and I'll answer this maybe for Ken and he can expand, but, but then there's, there, if that's what the adjoining would like, there's nothing stopping him from planting them there.
No, understood.
And we would consider letting him plant it. I mean, we would have to decide where, but, I mean, he's already encroaching, what, Peter, by his mowing twenty to forty feet onto our property?
Yeah, it's about twenty feet, yep.
Chris, just to make sure that I understand, is he asking for the additional trees between the existing trees and the property line? Is that where he's looking to put them?
I, I mean, I think that's open for discussion. Right now, the grading plan, you know, that we showed him showed from lot two twenty-one up to two, two twenty-one up to two nineteen, there's no buffering there at all. It's all being reviewed, re- removed because of the grading. Now, pulling the contours back, that'll save some. It's hard to say how much it'll save. We'll have to see the grading plan to see that. But it's not unheard of to add some supplemental planning and maybe that's what I probably should have started with, to add some supplemental trees in there to fill in the weak spots. And you are proposing some other, looking at the landscaping plan, you do have some trees in some of the backyards. I wouldn't mind taking those trees, so it's not costing anymore, and maybe, you know, sw- swapping them to put it along the buffer there.
Peter.
I think we're only talking really two lots, two nineteen.
Yep, Chris, that's, that's pretty much what we're talking. Originally, we proposed clearing back basically this two twenty-one lot.
Right.
Because of the grading. We're really only talking about these two, two lots, two nineteen, two twenty. And then with, like you had said, with whatever trees could get saved along the existing tree line here, closest to the property line, based on my.
Yeah, so. You're right, Mike. So I would put them between the, between the property line and the tree line. So, you know, they're not up against the houses. So it gives, we, we want the neighbors to have, or the, the new people, you know, homeowners to have a usable yard too. So that's why I think maybe just trying to supplement, you know, what's there, I think is a good compromise.
Chris, may I ask?
Peter, I'm sorry. It looks like Peter's trying to talk and it doesn't look like you're muted, but I can't hear you.
He's probably saying what a wonderful idea it is.
Okay, thank you. So here's my thought is then, because I think that is the solution. We're required to provide two trees per lot, straight trees. As with section one, we're propose, you know, we're showing one tree per lot and we're taking the other fifty-four trees and scattering them out throughout the site. Think what I heard you say, Chris, is let's take a certain number of those and allocate them to the rear of lots two twenty-one through two nineteen. So thus, the cost to the developer remains consistent with what he would have to spend. But it, maybe it identifies a specific need of the town for those trees. I agree, we should put them up against the property line. I would recommend that they are kept solely on the two nineteen through two twenty-one properties, so those property owners have, you know, their, their trees, so to speak. But I do think that is a, a compromise or, or a solution to the concern, that we would just reallocate some of the trees we have elsewhere on the site to put them there based on this identified need, if that's acceptable to the board.
Chris, can I ask you a question? What is that outbuilding used for? It's not a residence, correct?
No, I, I would, I don't know for certain, but I would suggest it's probably like a, like a big shed. It looks to me like there's a dock on the existing pond there, so maybe they keep, you know, certain things in there that they can use to, you know, for the pond. They look like an upscale pool house, maybe.
Agreed. Thank you.
So, Chris, can we, I like that compromise. Is that something that that you would work out with the applicant as far as the number of trees and things like that?
Yeah, I think that's something that we could certainly work out with the applicant and I, to be honest, I'd like to bring the homeowner in just so he's, you know, comfortable with it.
Okay.
But yes, I would like to work something out between all parties.
Mrs. Sproul, you'll make that note in the minutes, correct?
I just interject for a moment.
Okay, so the floor belonged to Mr. McIntyre.
A while ago.
Before you leave the tree issue, can I just interject that to the degree that you're putting these trees on the lots that are going to be sold, the, the new homeowner has every option to remove them if he wants. Maybe he wants a view of the pond. It's not really a solution, so to speak.
What about a conservation easement, Dan? Is that where you're going?
No. That's not where I'm going. I'm, but I'm just saying, if you think that that solves a problem, I, I, I would disagree just on the basis of whoever is going to own that property can do what they wish with it.
And that's true. We, we certainly have had that issues in the past and, and the only way around it that I can see is, you know, even a conservation easement is tough. But, you know, certainly there's some enforcement that we could use if, if the people do go into it. And it doesn't have to be the whole width. Maybe it's like a twenty-foot width all the way up and down the property line. I don't know. What, what do you think, Peter?
I, 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 I think I agree with where Dan is going with this. I don't think that's something we want to do. We, I don't think we want to encumber these lots with a conservation easement, because again, I'll go back to the basic principle again. You know, these are compatible zoning districts. And I guess the other part is, you know, same with the street trees themselves. Those are planted outside the right of way. In theory, there's nothing stopping a homeowner from taking those trees down when they move in. Same with the trees we're proposing elsewhere throughout this subdivision. I mean, they're going to be on private property. The town doesn't have a history of saying, you know, okay, plant these trees as it relates to street trees, but, you know, you can never cut them down. I mean, you would, logic would say that that's why, but I think the point is by planting them along the rear property line, you know, thus maximizing usable rear yard area, you would suspect or expect them to remain, but you know, to, to, I, I, I just, I'm not a big fan of encumbering lots with conservation easements that become difficult to enforce. You know, and just encumber that lot in perpetuity over something like this.
Peter, could we, could we put it right on the property line and that would serve as a deterrent to encroachment on either side?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could put them, you know, put them right against the property line for sure. I, I don't think we, you know, there's that argument of putting them right on the property line. Obviously, I don't think our, the developer or his contractor is going to want to be working on an adjoining property because of insurance reasons and things, but.
How many, how many trees are we talking about, Peter?
You know, Chris, my thought is, if, if for your opinion, I was thinking we're probably looking at, you know, plus or minus twenty trees along there.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable. You know, there are probably what, twenty-foot spacing, something like that?
Yeah, I was figuring two hundred linear feet at, at ten foot on center.
Yeah.
If I could have the floor for a moment?
Certainly.
I guess I'm, I'm struggling with allocating twenty trees that are, for the good of the neighborhood, for these two lots, where there isn't a buffering requirement. Someone may want to have the view of that lot and the view of that pond, which is absolutely lovely. Why should that view be exclusive to that homeowner?
And I think it's being a good neighbor, Dan. I think that's what it comes down to.
I, I'm sorry, what?
I, I think it comes down to being a good neighbor. This is Chris.
How are we being a bad neighbor if we don't put twenty trees there? And I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just trying to understand your perspective, Chris.
In this, when this project came for, for the board as a preliminary subdivision, that was one of the concerns that a lot of the neighbors adjacent to the property, the subdivision have. Now, granted, they don't own the property and, you know, they've been enjoying it not being developed all these years. But, you know, the, the buffers are, they're are important. You know, we just had a discussion with somebody today regarding a buffer. And, you know, we always try to preserve them as, as best we can. You know, that's the only, the only thing they have to, you know, you can think about it. There's a hundred and, a hundred and seven houses going in here and it's been vacant all these years. It's hard for these people to get used to. So I think being a good neighbor and, and putting twenty trees in to, to try to, you know, help somebody out, I don't think it's a bad thing.
Okay, well, if you want to take the, if you want to allocate twenty trees away from the neighborhood to the rear lines of these, that, that's certainly your prerogative and I don't have a problem with that. I, I just, I struggle with how it makes us bad neighbors.
Yeah, and I think you have to look at it from our side, Ken. You know, we're the ones that get the complaints and the calls and the dust noise compl- you know, all that stuff. And I would say that this subdivision has done a phenomenal job once for section one. I, it's probably one of the best sites that we had as far as, you know, not getting a lot of complaints and things being, you know, turning the metal and such, so there's no erosion. So whatever contractor you had, I thought did a good job and we'd like to keep it that way, but you know, these buffers are important to the neighbors, you know, this, even though you have a right to develop, they have to live with it, as well as the neighbors that are buying the homes. You know, these buffers, I think, are just as important to them.
I guess we can, we don't have to agree on what it, what it means to be a good neighbor, but if you'd like to have allocate the twenty trees from that neighborhood there along the property line, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I respectfully don't see it the same way you do.
All right, and to be honest, I don't vote, so it's really up to the other seven members. I'm just voicing my opinion.
Chris, this is Rick. Can I, can I make a, not a suggestion, but something for consideration? The applicant said that he would offer to provide twenty trees, but I also am sensitive to the fact that the people who buy their lots may not want the trees there and maybe, it may be a burden to the, to the person who purchases those lots. Maybe a fallback position would be offer the person who's. Maybe a fallback position would be offer the person who's concerned about the visual, uh, aspects to offer him the twenty trees and put them on his property.
Yeah, that's a damn Estrella question.
Well, I, I, I mean, you know, there's always two sides to a story and the people who buy the lots, they're just, they have a right to have on their land what they want as well. And if he's worried about, I can see it both ways. Why wouldn't he put the trees on his property? And, and, um, as a consideration, if it's trees that he wants, what's ten yards going to make as far as visual buffering?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think he would have a problem with that. I haven't certainly reached out to him, but I guess I'm curious if the developer would be willing to do that.
Not to consider it. I was just trying to, you know, come up with a solution.
Yeah, understood.
We're not adding additional trees. We're, we would be utilizing the same twenty trees that would be part of the overall trees required onto the lot. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the, the rendering that we have now shows a street tree in front. And then I, I think you have street trees in the, or trees in the, I'm sorry, trees in the backyard as well, correct?
Yeah, correct. We have additional trees in the, in the rear of, um, many of the lots. So like, I think, Chris, just to clarify, you're, you're talking about relocating some of the, some of the trees that we have already proposed on the site to the rear of two nineteen and two twenty.
Right, because I think what I find, and even as a homeowner, you know, I, I want to put the trees where I want to put them. You know, I mean, I think a lot of people do add trees to their front yard and backyard after the fact. Some don't, but I think most people do. And you typically with these street tree, or that we call them a street tree, if it's trees in the front yard, you know, half the time they either move them to someplace else and supplement it with stuff or, you know. And they have certainly the right to do that after everything's been closed. But, you know, I think in the backyard, I don't think one tree is really going to make all that much different unless it serves, you know, a bigger purpose like a buffer or something like that.
Can, can I, can I ask a really quick question? Um, you, you said that you're proposing changing the grading a little bit so you don't necessarily have to take out all the trees. Is that correct? That's kind of how we started this?
Correct.
Okay, so, so it's possible that we might have one row of trees left after redoing the grading a little bit?
And to be honest, that, that may be enough. I don't know. But it's, it's a mixture of deciduous and, and, you know, pine and spruce trees, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, we're going down a rabbit hole here and it, it's a little sneaky because I, I could see everybody's point here. Um, and, and, uh, to Chris's point, to Ken, you know, it looks, if you look at that pond, it looks like there's a dock there. It looks like they might be jumping off and swimming in there. Me as a father of three daughters, if my daughters were always swimming in there and people all of a sudden had a mode to be checking out my daughters, for lack of a better term, that would be a little bit disconcerting to me. So maybe that's the case with this neighbor, which is to this point, we have to consider why the neighbor has an issue. Um, however, to, to Peter's point, this is what they're building. And if they don't want trees there, they could literally, we could leave them there and they could cut them down theoretically. So I, we, we got to be careful going too down this rabbit hole because I, I think that if we can do the grading thing and we can keep one row on there, we don't get into planning here or planning there or unplanning. We just keep it there and say it is what it was. After that, each of them are responsible for what they want to do. I think that's probably the way to go.
I, I like that approach. I think, you know, the neighbor is certainly, i- if he's concerned about who's looking at him from, from their houses, he could put a fence up. It's obviously, what, over a couple of hundred yards from his house? And for whenever he wants to use the pond, uh, if he wants to put a fence up or, or, or he wants to put privacy on his yard, I have no problem with that. As, and, and the, the, the people who buy these lots may, they may want to put a fence up so they're not looking at his pond, but that's up to the, whoever buys those lots. I absolutely concur with you.
Just to verify where the houses are, I, I'm looking at a map and, and the house and what appears to be a barn, they're a good two hundred yards, two hundred feet south of, uh, the pond. Is that correct?
More than, more than two hundred.
Yeah, so the main, the main house and the garage or barn, whatever you want to call it, there's some good buffering there because all those trees are staying.
Well, my point would be, we do, we are concerned when it's, uh, a new development is facing a house. I can't say that we've ever had an issue where what we're talking about is a pond which might be used for six months out of the year. It's probably not even that. Um, so I, I would have to really kind of agree with the developer that yes, we should do something, but, you know, we aren't talking about the guy's house that he's concerned about. We're talking about a pond.
That's, that's kind of where I'm at as well. It, if, it would be a different story if we were talking about his residence. But this is some type of an outbuilding, um, that is probably storage for whatever he does on that pond. Um, so I don't think the twenty trees moved that would be to the benefit of the entire phase two, um, that would benefit the existing family, in my opinion. Um, I don't think that's something that should be as important as if it was a private residence. Some type of buffering maybe up against the immediate border of that. But, um, who knows? The, the, the resident might want to put up a privacy fence when they move in. Um, but because it's a outbuilding of some sort that we don't know what it's used for and it is not a residence, I, I think we should take that into consideration.
Let me, um, let me jump in here and, and go back to Mr. McIntyre. And as we go through, I'll have each of the members, go ahead and weigh in with your opinion as, as we go through. And then Mr. Page, I'll come back to you, um, as well. So Mr. McIntyre, the.
If I were here, this whole tree thing, you can get it out of the way. Unless we go to a table or something and try to resolve this at a later time. But we've spent, what, half hour trying to resolve this? So, um, um, why don't we just poll and find out where everybody stands on it?
Okay, we can certainly do that. Um, so the question is, do we, do we feel the applicant needs to relocate, or not relocate, but allocate some of the uh, tree inventory to the, the rear lots of, uh, of those two properties? Or, uh, are we comfortable with just leaving things as they are and that one row of, uh, of trees that will remain after the grading? Um.
I, I would, I would say, Mr. Chairman, this is an if then, because I don't know for sure that they can keep that row of trees. So if, developer, um, do you think with the grading, we can keep that row of trees?
I think that what's going to happen is those trees are going to wind up gone. Um, there might be a few healthy trees, big trees that they might save, but I assume the developer is going to go in there and just going to clear cut that entire area.
Okay.
I think with the grading that we can, we can try to save as many of the healthy, mature trees as possible. For, between a fifteen to twenty-foot strip along the eastern side of that existing tree row.
Okay, so that's, that's the if. The then would be, okay, then I wouldn't require you to put more trees there. There still is the gap with no current trees. So.
There.
So the question is whether we have them plant trees or not.
Or not plant trees. Okay. So, uh, Mr. Page, your thoughts?
I, I think the rights of the person who buys the lot um, are as important as the person who wants to have some additional buffering on a building that's not even resided in. So I, I'm going to vote no.
No, okay. Mr. McIntyre?
I will go with planting.
Yes, you want some trees, okay. Mr. Borkowski?
For the record, I am usually about the existing neighbor, but I'm actually with the developer on this one. I think that it's, I, I'm hoping they can keep a row of trees there, but I think it's unreasonable for somebody to expect that that was never going to be developed. So I do not require the trees. I would like them to be there.
Okay. Mr. Ecker?
Um, we deal with this all the time. And, um, you know, there's a, there's both sides of this story, so I have a hard time understanding. I would love to see a row of existing left. That doesn't mean the homeowner that moves into that house can't cut them all down. Uh, the neighbor, it is a pond and he's been more than aware for the past, how long has this project been going on, Ken? Three years? You know, this is like, so this development came through, through the planning board, um, and prior to that, even prior to starting. So, you know, he has had, you know, plenty of notice of this project going in that he could have also, you know, worked on those trees or worked on that buffer a little bit more than even potentially mowing it down. Um, he may be unaware over decades of time of where his property line actually exists. Um, that could be part of the problem. Um, so, but that doesn't alleviate any of that. Um, so my black and white answer to this is if a row of trees can be left, I would be great with it. If it can't be, then I think Chris and I need to go to the homeowner and see if they will provide, you know, if they want to have the trees on their property, then we can go from there. Um, one of the other, and, and see if, Ken, if you're willing to give him the trees and if he wants to put them in, then I think then that's another step down the road if we can't hit plan A, which is to leave a row of trees. Um, I, I don't want to provide any more, you know, substance to that beyond that point because, you know, there, there are two parties here that we both take respect.
So you're in favor of, of, uh, planting or, or not planting right now?
I am only in favor of planting if a row of trees, as in Matt Borkowski stated, can't be, uh, can't remain exist.
Okay. Mrs. Brill?
Then again, planting a row of trees, how many? I don't think twenty is necessary. We don't even know if there's windows on this side of whatever this building is, how often it's used. Um, can we make it a requirement of the grading that certain trees are tied off and saved?
May I ask a question?
Can I, can we answer that first? Can we make it a requirement that when the grading is done, certain trees are left? You know, I see trees taped off, you know, on different properties to be saved. Um, is that something we can require?
I think we can.
Yeah, Patty, let me answer that. I don't know if you could require it or not, but I know a lot of times we'll require orange construction fence off to delineate trees that are going to be preserved and not taken down by the developer.
Mm-hmm. That's what I was going to say, Chris.
So we could make that a stipulation of trying to save, you know, I don't know, twenty-foot strip, but, um, you know, that's something that's up for the developer to talk about.
Or not to talk about, but determine.
Sure. I would like to see some of the trees, um, as close to the property line saved. I don't think it's necessary to add additional trees, especially if we're going to take away trees that would benefit the overall neighborhood. Um, I think tree plantings would only have to be to the immediate left or west of the southernmost part of this. I mean, we don't even know where the entrance is or windows or anything. But, um, putting trees to provide privacy where it's necessary, but we don't know where necessary is according to what we're looking at here.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Neal, did we get to you yet?
She's done, and Pete?
She was a no, yeah. Mr. Neal?
You're muted, Larry. You're muted.
I hate these new-fangled things. Uh, if it were the residents that we really were concerned about, then I would all be for planting trees. But to me, because it's the pond, it's in the, you know, way back in this house, I'm going to say I'm going to vote for, with the developer.
There's a no?
That's a no.
And I feel no also, so.
Can, can I ask for a point of clarification? Two, two lots that we were talking about, am I correct in saying that there's no hedge row there anyway, right?
False. The, there is an existing tree row, hedge row on those two lots. That would get, originally was proposed to get cleared on two nineteen, two twenty, but we'll look with the grading to try, try to save as much as we can.
Okay, I thought maybe that you were, okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
May I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
The part, the, the structure in question, uh, does that have, does that structure have a setback requirement from the property line? And do we even know if there are windows in that structure?
Chris or Mr. Mestrela, do you have the answer to that question?
Yeah, I mean. I, I can't tell you what the setback is, uh, in.
If it's our one fifteen, it's typically around eight feet, plus or minus. You know, I'd have to, you know, who knows what the code was back then when that was installed? I mean, that could have been there for thirty, forty years, for all we know, before a lot of our.
Your setback, ten foot.
So that, that really isn't the issue? I, I would, um, you know, I think the idea of you trying to save as many trees as, as you can, the, you know, closer to the lot line is great because it's going to encourage somebody wants to buy a lot of trees, to buy that lot, uh, it's going to discourage somebody who wants to look at that pond from doing it. But I think that's as much as the board can do. The trees are on your property. They're on the developer's property. They're going to be on private homeowner's property. Planting twenty trees along the lot line, i- if it's on the homeowner's property, isn't going to guarantee anything. Uh, you know, they, they, they can easily, uh, destroy them. And it, it doesn't, I'm, the existing homeowner, you know, I understand sympathizing with the fact that he has had, uh, the existing conditions for quite some time, but that, that's just not the way it works. And, and it's, it's not the way it works legally.
Thank you, Mr. Mestrela.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I know we're belaboring this a little bit, but, uh, to Mr. Mestrela, can we make a motion, like if this goes a little further, can we make a motion that, um, we approve this? No additional trees contingent on leaving a twenty-foot strip of these things? Can we be that specific?
I don't think.
I mean, can you do that? Sure, you can do that. Uh, if, if the developer can't comply with it or objects to it, it, you know, can take whatever actions are necessary on his part. Um, I, I think that you know who you're dealing with here and that you go with, uh, best efforts.
Would, would the applicant be amicable to that idea? And if for some reason the grading would not allow twenty feet, then we could make it administrative? Would the applicant be okay with that idea?
I'm okay with it. Mike, if you tell me you think, uh, the grading is sufficient that we could, uh, we could try to do our very best to save what's there, I have no problem with that. I would encourage that.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be hard to give an exact width. But, um, but like Ken said, I don't see an issue with trying to save as many as we can.
Okay. Yeah, and, and maybe, right, and maybe in the, in the contingency, we say twenty, but once again, if it's less than twenty, then it becomes an administrative action. You know, you come to, you come to Chris and you say, well, you know, we can only do eighteen? I personally wouldn't kill you for that, but I, I want to give ourselves a little bit of a, a, a static number. And so you know what we're looking for. And then if it's under that, I have no problem with, personally, this would mean one, one board member going to Chris and saying, listen, we can only get eighteen with this grading. I would be okay with that.
Sure.
Okay. But thank you, Mr. Borkowski. Mr. McIntyre, if anything else?
Uh, I'm almost afraid to bring another one up. How about, uh, comments general number eight? Additional headspace to be provided around future town-owned land. Also, signage may be required in order to prevent future residents from encroaching on the parkland. This should be discussed with the planning board. Um, where do you guys see yourselves on that signage and the iron pins survey? To the developer?
The, I don't, I don't remember, recall signage being part of section one um, along the, along the boundary of the, the open space.
I don't, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand your answer. Paul, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't understand your answer.
The. I think the question was if about signage along the, the boundary of the open space, correct?
Yeah, there was, there was two parts to it. There was uh, adding some additional iron pins. Uh, to denote the town owned land that you're going to turn.
The, yes, the, the um, the iron pins was a markup from, from Chris and Roman on the, on the plan markups. I think we can accommodate that.
You, I can't, I think I understand him. You're saying that it will be done or it won't be done?
It will be done.
Will be done, okay. What about signage? Will you be providing signage for the?
We're not proposing any signage. I, we kept it consistent with section one, which didn't have signage.
So there would be no signage required for section two?
Correct.
Yeah, I guess Steve, if I could follow up on that, I mean, I I mean, is there, I I, and I think where we're a little confused is. If the towns adopted a policy where they do now want uh, town open space, uh. Uh, you know, a demarcation of that or a sign notifying people that. I mean, obviously we have to comply with that policy as part of any conveyance of open space to the town board. Um, so I guess I, you know, we need to ask uh, the people assembled here from the town. If that's, if that is now a, a new policy, obviously if it is, obviously we have to abide by it.
And the problem that we have, Peter, is we see a lot of encroachments. People don't know where their back property line is. You know, just like what you're seeing on the eastern boundary, we see that in our Berkshire Park, Hollid Acres. You know, it, people just encroach unfortunately. And if you don't tell them where it is. You know, then there's problems. We do it in conservation easements, things of that nature. Some people put birdhouses or something. Peter, I can't hear you.
Right, I was going to say, um. Ironically, I mean, that's part of the reason we propose those trees along the rear of those lots because those become a physical. Marker that says, you know, these trees are planted along the shared boundary line with the town open space. That's something. You can tell the homeowner.
And that would be acceptable as opposed to a sign then, as long as the homeowners know that when they purchase the house.
Right, but you know, but like I said, we've seen communities where right, they, they, you know, they have some form of signage. My, my question is. You know, what is the town of Henrietta standard? Because you know, some, some towns use a four by four post, you know, with the town emblem on it.
Yeah, and we've been using signs on a lot of ours. Usually it's for conservation easements, uh, but sometimes we do it for open space as well. We have a detail in our um, online. Um, that can be used, but you know, what we need is just some type of delineation and if it's a tree, I'm okay with that. Because you're not going to be using them on the buffer.
Either we can't hear you.
Uh, the answer to your question, Steve, is yes, we will uh, put, uh, we will demarcate. The, the town open space uh, per a standard that's agreeable to town staff and. And ultimately, it's got to be to the town board because they've got to accept the open space and dedication.
So you would provide signage? If the, would the town provide you a possible template to use? Or would you be expecting the town to provide the signs?
We've seen it done all different ways. I, and that goes, I I guess I would just say we'd work it out with staff because on one hand. Uh, you know, as, as Chris has pointed, the trees themselves serve the purpose also. And I think it's a function of what is, what does staff feel is appropriate here um, for that. But the, the answer, the, the answer to the question is yes, we will demarcate, demarcate it to the satisfaction of, of the town.
Okay, right.
And and we'll add a note to the plan that basically calls that out.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Mr. Borkowski, anything further?
You know what? I think we belabor this a bit. I I have questions or nothing, uh, killer. I'm always about um. Neighbors being neighborly, which was really the crux of that situation. I think that we've got a, a possible decent compromise, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Chair will recognize Mrs. Brill. Mrs. Brill?
Thank you. And you know, I commented on my, my feelings toward the trees to the west portion of that. Out parcel, outbuilding, so I think we've covered that. Um, I think. Having those trees along the rear property line is enough to um, demarcate and identify the rear property line. Um, again, it comes back to if the resident or residents decide they don't want that tree, they don't want to rake leaves or whatever the case may be. Um, and the tree or trees are gone, then we're without a, a marker, if you will. Um, but if that can be handled administratively, I agree that that would be acceptable. If signage was not required for the first portion, how does it differentiate from this, this portion? Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair will recognize Mr. Eckert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to see that open space delineated. We can work that out separately. Uh, we do have a lot of encroachment issues. Uh, if we missed it on section one, then that can be something that the town can go out and take a look at. Um, the question that I have, I, this probably came up because this section, along with section one was approved prior. There, there's no sidewalks at all in this entire subdivision?
Um, I can answer that question, Craig. Uh, because what, uh, this was handled at overall preliminary. And what was agreed upon was a sidewalk gutter section was installed along the roadway. That goes out to Farrow Road Extension, that, that small segment there in section one. And then the developers uh, made the shoulder improvements. Along the north side of Farrow Road Extension that's now striped as a shared use uh, lane. Because that was done in direct response at the time of preliminary review. To the neighbors further down about traffic on Farrow Road about. And the fact that there was a gap in the sidewalks along Farrow Road that were put in with Graywood Meadows that they went nowhere. So basically what the planning board did at that time was said, and in lieu of putting sidewalks in within this development. That those dollars were spent by the developer to improve the Farrow Road Extension shoulder to provide a, a bike lane and. On a pedestrian way and that even included, if you recall, redoing the culvert there and the, and the guide rail and everything. So that's where those dollars went.
Thank you, uh, and that's correct. You jumbled my memory with that and I, I appreciate that, so. The um, you know, and that's great. I'm glad that we saw some sort of compromise. Uh, it always just points out to a, a safety issue internally when children are walking to the bus in the morning and plows are coming down at six, seven in the morning. With no lights or no sidewalks and there's a, a conflict of safety there that I've seen. Uh, you know, when I oversaw plowing operations, so I always try to keep an eye out for those safety considerations, including sidewalks. Um, so let me get back to the only other comments. Is this whole section all going to be developed at once? Are we doing this in separate phases? This is a pretty big section these days now.
Now, it is the developer's intent, uh, they'll post a letter of credit and develop the improvements for the entire fifty-four lots.
What's uh, what's left on section one? I haven't been out there in about a month and I, I'm ballparking about fifty percent developed on one. Is that right, Ken?
I, I don't remember off the top. Uh, I would say that's probably about right. Uh, and and we really have not yet determined what our timing is going to be uh, to start development on this.
Okay, so that's a good question. So the only other point that I have to this is along with this development, there, I believe there's still a punch list. Um, open for section one and there were items related to the pump station. Uh, I know that that is being operated from section one now, but more flowing would make it even more problematic, I think, for some of those issues. Uh, I will um, put my hands on that punch list and re uh, issue that so that everybody has a handle on that going forward. That uh, we'd like to see some of those things dressed up too at the same time. So that is the only other comments I have, Mr. Chairman, on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Chair will recognize Mr. Neil.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris, actually, I I'll start off with a verification or clarification. On your um, general comments number five, you list lots one oh five, one oh six, one oh seven. Could it be they in factor one fifty-three, one fifty-two and one fifty-one?
Yeah, well, it's the um, Mike, can you go back to the um, did you have one that showed the uh, private drive going back? Yeah, so there's, there's three flag lots back there. Um, and I know one of the homeowners back there, um, they had that, there's a, there's a gravel drive. Um, they were just wondering when that was going to be put in. I mean, it could be put in for all I know right now. I haven't been out there, but. Have those three flag lots developed yet?
I'm not sure if the houses are built.
They're not, the houses are not built on those flag lots yet.
Right.
Yeah, so one fifty-three, one fifty-two, one fifty-one.
Right, yeah, so that's, they were probably renumbered. I'm going off the original preliminary plans.
Sure, okay.
So these have been renumbered to, you know, to correspond to section two, so. But yes, those were the three lots that were in question.
Okay, so.
The road is paved.
Okay, so that's all, so the, the houses aren't there, but the infrastructure's been put in and everything else?
Correct, that, yeah, that was done with section one construction.
All right.
Okay, so we're all set then. Is that correct?
That we're all, that's correct.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Uh, Mr. Mestrela, Mr. Martin, any further comments?
No, I've said my piece.
I'm, I'm uh, fine with the way you handled that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Sir Chairman, I would be willing to make a motion on uh, PB three oh five dot two. Um, I just want to make sure before I make the motion that the developers uh, we're looking for a, a compromise, applicable compromise, correct? So I just want to make sure if I make a motion, that's contingent on a twenty foot strip of trees. Um, left and if less, there's administrative oversight. Are you okay with that?
I think we're okay with that, yep.
Okay, then I will make a.
I'm okay with it.
I will make a motion to approve PB three oh five dot two, contingent on a twenty foot strip of trees left. And if less than that, will be administrative oversight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Borkowski.
Uh, it, just question on those two lots is what you're referring to?
Unmute, please.
Sorry, thank you. Um, I am talking about the east side of the development by the pond, yes. Correct.
Do we have a sufficient second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Eckert, thank you. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. In the opinion of the Chair, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Uh, congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, last item on the agenda, application number PB two four. Subdivision for preliminary subdivision approval of a forty-seven lot residential subdivision with ninety point six acres of open space. And the conservation easement area off of Ward Hill Row. Everyone will make a motion that the Town of Henrietta Planning Board declares intent to be lead agency for the purpose of a coordinated seeker review. Do I have a second? McIntyre? I'll have to vote, right? Okay. Okay. Hi, um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Carries, thank you. Chris, anything before we adjourn?
No, we will have a meeting in June. Let me just verify that. The next planning board meeting is June sixteenth. It's our only meeting and it looks like Forest View subdivision that we heard back in March. Is going to be on the agenda for seeker and uh, preliminary subdivision approval.
I have a question um, regarding the motion um, that Mr. McIntyre second. Um, for the subdivision off of Ward Hill. Um, was that to be, intend to be lead a, agency?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, for the purpose of coordinated seeker, Patty. Okay, motion to adjourn? Mr. Page, thank you.
Eight twenty-seven PM.
Thank you.
On an offhand note, uh, wanted to be known that both Mr. Bogacheski and Mr. Harris are classmates.
Hey, Craig. Can you uh, fix my bag so I can?